Hi.
Hey, welcome to another episode of Mundeline Minute.
We're back!
We're back, vacation's over. This is what, episode number thirteen?
Sure.
Sure, we're gonna go with that. Uh, it'll say it up here in the corner.
On your ceiling?
Yep.
I'm just kidding.
Thank you for that, Kara. So, episode number thirteen, and we're gonna recap the village board meeting from last night, July twenty-sixth. First up, my name's Eric Schwank and I'm a trustee here in Mundeline. Who are you?
Hi, I'm Kara.
Hi Kara.
Hi, guess I'm a trustee here in Mundeline too.
Yes, you are. Kara, has my, what did my son just call you? The honorable trustee Kara Lambert?
I prefer your highness.
Oh wow.
That's what I make Russ call me.
Poor Russ. Alright, quick disclaimer, this is, uh, we're back at my house and this is my basement. There is, let's see, three kids, three cats.
Also, you just added these lights this week?
Oh, why? No, the lights have been here before.
Have they?
Yeah, I remember.
They're real, I know, but they're real bright today.
Yeah.
Okay. Wait, you know what? I got these sunglasses for my birthday.
There you go, just wear those. And, uh, all of the lights, these, these lights, the microphones, the cameras, the equipment, the everything here is mine, nothing from taxpayer dollars. Used in the creation, editing, and distribution of the podcast.
Hurry up!
So, on to the board meeting.
It's like the longest intro ever.
It is a long intro.
And everyone that clicked it is now not watching.
I know, but you gotta get past all that stuff.
Fast forward.
So...
Quick recap, or are you gonna go?
Yeah, quick recap. So, we, we actually kinda did a lot of stuff last night in our one-hour board meeting.
Yeah, but you know what I noticed last night? That a lot of it was under the mayor's report.
A lot of it was under the mayor's report. So, we, um, authorized the use of village, uh, plaza, so the circle out front. So, this is one of those things that always has to come to the village board for anything in the plaza. So, we did that. What else did we do? The NYMEC green aggregation program, whistleblower program, some liquor licenses, public commentary, um, some rezoning. That was a big one, rezoning for Lake Street properties.
Keep going, because we're gonna talk in detail about stuff, but just go fast, and then we'll talk in detail.
And, so we re, sorry, rezone that, uh, some big grant money for the Oak Trail Tap House. What else did we do? Changed some fees for filing of petitions and sharing some resources, paid some bills, and, uh, denied some proposals for digester lid rehabilitation. That was a big, big one.
Yeah.
And that was about it. No executive session, couple items on the omnibus vote list.
We had a liquor commission meeting too.
And a liquor commission meeting, that's true.
So, that's a rough overview, and then now we'll go into some deets.
And go.
Let's go into some deets. Uh...
So, first up was the approval of minutes. Of course, the attendance and pledge of allegiance came first, and then approval of minutes. I asked for a small change, so the, the, they were amended. The last board meeting, I talked about, um, the storage rental fees, and, and that was not included in the original minutes that were posted last week. So, I asked the clerk to make some, some changes, some modifications, and that was added. So, that's why, excuse me, that's why the, the motions was, what was it?
Amended.
As amended.
As amended, which we got like a little copy on our, what's that thing called?
Dais.
Dais, yeah. Um, but I think like now the public record will affect the amended minutes.
Correct. Um, public commentary, there was two people, um, Margaret Booth who, who talked about, um, no limit to public commentary.
Do you wanna talk about this now, or you wanna talk about it during the motion?
We'll go to the motion.
Okay.
And then Joe Schwan talked about, uh, beautification of landscaping. All you, right there. He speaks your language, doesn't he?
Well, so he speaks my language, but also because I work in that plaza that he's referencing.
Preach?
Lord, I agree so much. So, uh, he's talking about the plaza on forty-five, which Jewel is, about how it's not like kept up well. Well, I am psycho, I mean, no, no news to you, but about things looking very pretty. Are you gonna edit this out to just say, "I'm psycho"?
I was actually thinking, this is gonna be the next gift right here. "I am psycho."
I really like things to look nice, um, and so like I constantly call our property, uh, so I work in that plaza, so I constantly call the owner and the property manager of that plaza, because there's like, they don't put bags in the garbage cans, so then garbage goes everywhere. I would like them to plant more flowers. There, for example, there's a speed bump out there that's broken that I've called like four or five times on. So, I'm definitely trying to get that. The problem, you know, like it's private property, so yes, the village should do something, but we can't, because it's owned by someone else. Drives me bonkers. So, Mr. Schwan, if you're watching, you probably aren't, but I wanted to respond to you and be like, "I'm trying so hard!" We're trying on that plaza.
And that right there was the screen grab for this...
End of rant.
This episode.
Just me being like, "Ah!" Just drives me insane.
Yeah.
Also, I've called like the building department on it to see if they can, like, not to be annoying, but to see if they can push like the hands, and I know that they've tried in the past, because there's a corner of that plaza that the wind flows, and you literally get a trash tornado.
Right. Oh, in the corner back where that tobacco store used to be.
Oh, what happened to that? Trustee Lambert.
You took care of that.
Took care of that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that was public commentary. Uh, next was presentations and awards, which there wasn't any. Public hearings, there was, but we did that after...
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, yeah.
The mayor's report.
Yeah.
And I wasn't exactly sure why that happened.
Yeah, I was really confused.
Yeah.
Like, I was like on the agenda trying to figure out what was going on, like, we weren't, what was going on?
Sorry, excuse me. I think, I think the only, the only thing that came to mind was the agenda time said seven fifteen, and you can't start it earlier, so I think you go through the mayor's, the mayor's report, and then come back and do that.
Got it, okay, that makes sense.
So, mayor's report. Uh, a mayoral proclamation was issued for the twenty-twenty-one National Night Out. This is the thirty-eighth year.
So excited.
And, I know.
It's a fun night. If you have kids, bring them, it's super fun. My kids aren't old enough to stay up that late, but we do the fun stuff before, so.
And I noticed the park district is doing something too, with Barefoot Bay. I just saw the sign up.
Yeah, they did it two years ago. Yeah, it was super fun.
Yeah, it's cool.
So.
Uh, and then the, authorize the use of village plaza for the...
You're gonna get it wrong.
Oh, come on.
You got it.
Nuestras Fiestaes Patreas event. I hope that was...
That was not bad, that was pretty good.
Hey, the mayor nailed it last night.
I know.
He, he did really well in that. Um, so this is a festival that was two years ago, and then doing it again this year.
And it was really well attended, and I, I think it was really, we, I think we circled by it. My kid was much littler, so we weren't there long, but it was fun.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, next up was the NYMEC electricity contract. So, we talked about this during our, our last, um, podcast, and this is, um, the village use of electric aggregation.
Yes.
Is basically it. Finding a supplier for electricity for the village, and we opted for a fifty percent green energy renewable, um, renewable energy, and offsetting that, that cost for renewable energies, but also the village will get thirty...
Thirty-two, I think.
Thirty-two thousand-ish?
Yeah.
Um, out of this, this contract.
To me, this is like a no-lose, like you're supporting clean, clean energy initiatives, and we're banking a little bit of cash on it. I'm okay with it.
Correct. And, and, and there's no price difference.
The consumer theoretically won't even like see this. They won't even notice this.
They won't notice at all.
Right.
Next up was a whistleblower reporting policy. So, the, the governor, well, the state passed a whistleblower policy requirement, so this is now implementing it, and trustee Wilson even pointed out that we already had some policies in place. This is just putting them more in line with what the state's now requiring. Next was a Class G liquor license. This, so Momosushi, the owners, uh, the owners sold it to a new individual, and whenever that happens, you have to switch the liquor license.
So, I anticipate like next week we'll, or two weeks, we'll issue a new one, right? Because we didn't issue a new one last night.
I don't think we issued it. We, I'd have to go back and reread it.
Was it in there? Because typically we like take it away and then put it back on, but we didn't put it back on last night.
No, this was because we were just changing ownership.
Oh, got it, okay.
So, we didn't change the number of liquor licenses.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. Um, we did change the number of liquor licenses for Class N, and we authorized a, um, liquor license for Lakeshore Dance Academy.
Yeah, so they're just gonna serve beer and wine during recitals, basically.
Correct.
Kind of a fun thing.
In a, in a very limited amount. They're, you're only allowed so many in a, in a period of time, and it's much more controlled than...
But I feel like this is a good pathway for other things to use this, so, um, for example, like spas, doing like mimosas and pedis, or like mimosas and mayonnaise, it's like a good, so now there's a pathway in place, which is helpful, right?
Right.
Anyways.
Alright, so next was...
Where my brain is at, mimosas and pedis. Next time, let's record while drinking mimosas and getting pedi tears.
I'm cool with that. I mean, sure.
Got it.
Uh, public commentary policy.
Okay.
So, this was a, a hot issue, and I'll just come out and say that, uh, it, it was a three-three split amongst the trunks, trustees, trunksties.
Trunksties, I was like, where are you going with that word? Alright.
So, three-three split to the, to the trustees, and, and the mayor did break the tie, and the policy, uh, will be in place. So, the, the proposal that the board entertained last night was putting a five limit, five-minute li- limit.
You're out of time. I'm just kidding. I'm gonna set my timer right now, actually.
Right?
Here we go.
A five-minute limit for the amount of, of time that somebody can speak during public commentary. And five minutes is quite a long time. I'm, you, you have a timer going, and, and I know that I'm probably not going to, uh...
Set a timer for five minutes.
I probably won't go over that while I talk about this, but there is issues that require more than five minutes to speak about, and there's individuals that will require more than five minutes to get out what they would like to get out, and for the village board to hear it.
So, okay, this is annoying to me. Everything annoys me, apparently. Um, the, what came to mind when we were talking about this was the Diamond Lake Comprehensive Plan Meeting, and when, um, Ms. Becky came up and spoke about that. And I think she talked to the, talked to staff before, and like had prepared, and went ahead, but her presentation was obviously more than long, more than five minutes, and we as a board learned so much from that presentation.
Correct.
And so, I just kept like hearing that in my head. Also, we voted on something she suggested in that presentation last night, which is kind of ironic. So, I just kept like hearing that over and over, like, why would we limit it? So, the only thing that, the only reason you would limit it is because you wanna go home earlier, right?
Always selfish of the board, in my opinion.
Right, and, and who cares? Like, it's two meetings a month that you're committed to. You ran for office for a reason. Yes, I wanna go home and put my kids to bed at night, but whatever, it's two Mondays that you have to listen to your constituents, and like, you know, people have talked about, well, Facebook, and they can email us, and they can call us, and all these things. But here's one thing everyone missed. It's not on the public record if you do it that way.
Correct, and if you do it on Facebook, all of the board isn't allowed to chime in.
And who knows if all of the board reads Facebook? They shouldn't have to, because it's not a public forum. Yes, they probably do in, in all honesty, but it's not public record.
Correct.
So, I didn't say anything last night, because like you did, and trustee Cabatuela did, and I was like, there, I'm just gonna be redundant if I talk, but in my mind, you are there to serve the people that elected you. There's no reason to stifle them down to five minutes.
Correct.
What are we at, more right? But, and so it was, it was, it was an, also, besides that, we don't have a problem right now with people abusing public commentary.
No.
There hasn't been one in the past. We've had some long nights with controversial issues. Uh, the mayor, the medical marijuana night, by the way, I was pregnant during that, and like so uncomfortable.
For the adult use cannabis.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, oh, sorry, so with medical, but for adult use. I was pregnant and like super uncomfortable, but guess what? It's part of the gig. You just sit there and you listen, and like I...
Poll signs, we sat there and we listened.
Also, pregnant during that. So, like, yeah, it's annoying, but you, it's part of the gig. You chose to do this. You choose to live this life, and you choose to represent your community, listen to them.
Correct. I, and I wanna comment on what you said about, um, Gail Becky.
Yeah.
And last night, the mayor said that if you need to speak longer, then send your presentation to the board in advance. Gail Becky did, and she still went over five minutes.
Yeah.
And...
And it was super informative.
It was very informative, and, and Ms. Becky, um, having spoken with her, she is a speaker. She's, she's an expert witness for trials. She knows how to conduct herself, she knows how to speak in public. This isn't her first time, and she's already moved past some of those nerves and jitters that, that many people get when, when addressing the village board.
Yeah.
And it still took her more than five minutes to get all of her, her facts out.
Yeah.
So, I, I could not vote for this in good conscience, and I, and I voted no.
And we've kind of said it all along, you know, like, or at least I have, you know, the mayor's brought it up to me in the past, and I'm like, mm, meh, not a thing, like, just let people talk. I don't want rules around it.
Right.
So.
So, this is...
Whatever, we lost.
This is, exactly. This is consequences of elections, and we lost this one, and, um, that's, that's the way it is. And that said, I, I, I hear trustee Simple in my head that this is just a village board policy ordinance, that ordinance that the next village board can just change, and I hate that we spent tax dollars...
And time, and staff time. That's so frustrating to me. Like, we waste the time doing this.
Okay.
Now that that's out.
Rant over?
Ugh, now it is.
Rant over. Okay, so the, next in the ma, the mayor's report was the ho- hotel tax amendment. So, this was a, we already had a hotel tax, which...
So, this was extending it to Airbnb and Expedia?
Correct. Yep, exactly. So, now it covers just a few more entities. I think that the numbers that I saw...
How many Airbnbs do we have in here? Do you know?
I don't know.
Because we have to reg, they have to register them, I believe.
And then, I think I saw the number, an estimated amount of like thirty or thirty-five thousand dollars in additional tax revenue. So, not a large amount of money, but now they're all being treated the same. So, now we recessed into the liquor commission meeting, and we haven't had one of these since we started the podcast.
No.
So, the liquor commission meeting is...
Oh, there's your timer, five minutes.
Oh, that's my timer. So, we were pretty close.
We were pretty close.
Yeah.
But we definitely could've ranted longer.
A rant could last five minutes or more. And if you don't know that, get to know Kara. So, a liquor control meeting, we, we temporarily stopped the village board meeting and, and go into this, um, liquor control meeting, and the, the liquor control commission is there to look over liquor licenses.
Right, and so we're the, we're the liquor control commission, we're like from the state.
Right.
So, that's us as the commissioners. Yes.
Yes, and per our ordinances, it's, it's the trustees, and, um, we actually pay twenty dollars a month to be commissioners.
Got it, okay.
I know, it's a weird thing with, with how trustees are paid, but there's a set amount for being a trustee, and then there's a set amount for being a liquor commissioner, and, and that's there. So, the commissioners have oversight, and they get to, um, issue and suspend, revoke, or issue other disciplines, uh, disciplinary action as needed to ensure that...
I think the last one we had was, um...
November.
Was it November?
Yeah.
Was it, was that the Aldi one?
I don't remember exactly which it was.
I don't remember who it was, but anyways.
But there's been a couple that, um, the, uh, so, so what happens is that the police department goes out and does compliance checks, and if a business or individual fails the compliance check, then they have to come before the liquor control.
Should we talk about how they do compliance checks? Because I asked about this in a liquor, like, so they use, they don't, it's not like a, they're not sneaky about it. They don't use somebody that looks older, they don't put makeup on the person, they don't do any of that stuff. It's basically someone that definitely looks like a minor, so they're not, I asked, I think it was Chief Gunther at the time about how that's done, and he was like, "It's obvious." So, we're not like trying to play gotcha with it. Yeah.
Right. So, in this instance, it was, um, Crossroads of Ivanhoe, and a minor went in and ordered alcohol, and it was served alcohol, and the individual that was, that, that served them, um, did not have the Basset training that was required, um, and they served him. So, that's two violations, and the individual was arrested, and the citation was issued, and they come before, um, the village board or the liquor commission to, um, to discuss it, and...
It's like a cape, like a trial.
Yeah, it is. It's a hearing, yeah.
A hearing, that's what I'm like, what's up?
And, um, our prosecutor, Larry La Luzern, wow, Larry, it's a tricky name, and, um, he will generally come to some kind of an agreement, and in last night's agreement, it was, um...
The standard fine.
Standard, right.
First defense fine. You know, so what was really telling last night though, is like Crossroads has been there forever, and this was the first time they've had a violation.
Right. And, and, um, was it Jack, Jack Bose was there last night from, from the Bose Brothers that own Crossroads, and, and they were very remorseful about it, and they've talked about how, um, they don't have this kind of culture within their establishment, and that they're, they're working to, um, make sure this doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
So, they have to pay a fine of five hundred dollars within twenty-four hours. They, they, um, pleaded guilty to this, um, to this offense, and, and that was part of the, the deal that was struck with the prosecutor.
Yeah.
So, the, the board commissioners voted to accept that, uh, that, that deal, and, um...
And in hopes we never see him again.
In hopes we never see him again, is exactly it. So, we recessed back into the village board meeting, or I should say...
Close that meeting.
Adjourned that meeting, go back to the village board meeting, and into trustee reports.
I felt bad for the clerk last night.
I know, whenever we do all these hearings, it's like, okay, take, take role, take...
Role, attendance.
Yes, it's just...
A motion to adjourn, a motion to start, yeah.
So, trustee Cabatuela sits next to me, and at one point during all of the, the motions, and she, she said to, to trustee Wilson, I sure don't miss this. So, I totally understand. Next, we, we changed some zoning, and these were for the, oh my gosh, the elephants upstairs. The, um, we changed the Lake Street Park properties. There's two on Lake Street.
Hey, guess what?
Yeah.
This came from public commentary!
From Ms. Becky's public commentary that lasted more than five minutes. And we changed it to open space, so now it is zoned as open space, park space, and it's not, it did have commercial zoning, and now it's, um, yeah, now it's open space. And then we also changed, um, it doesn't have an address, but it's a tiny little triangle that, um, has been the, um, topic of many Facebook posts and public commentary.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This is the tiny little triangle that people thought the village could sell to Thorntons to give them the three acres necessary to, um...
Build a truck stop and have gaming.
Actually be a truck stop and have gaming. So, now that was rezoned, um, from C-five-C, part of the, the downtown corridor into open space as well.
So, also, that makes it more difficult for us to sell that land for commercial use.
Correct.
For its purpose.
Correct. Next up was the business incentive grant for Oak Trail Tap House.
Makes me so happy.
Go. Why does it make you happy?
Huh?
Well, why does it make you so happy?
Because the young entrepreneur that we always try to attract in Mundeline is continuing with his project. So, this is Omar that owns Oak Trail Spirits. I'm not a big drinker, so I don't really go in there much, but, um, he is opening a, basically like a ru, sort of like a restaurant, but it's like a tasting room slash restaurant, and he came before the board, I'm gonna lose track of time. It was the previous board, um, with the concept and his menu and all that ja- jazz, and so I'm super pumped that he's continuing this, and then we're not, and he, we didn't lose him to COVID. That was my fear, was that he would kind of like give up on this.
Not him.
No, not him, but the concept.
The concept, correct.
So, we issued him a big grant so that he could improve some of the outside structure of the facility.
And the inside, the kitchen space, all that, yeah.
So, good, like, this is, this is two weeks in a row, or two meetings in a row, where we've heard of, we issued big grants for restaurants expanding.
Correct.
And another restaurant coming, so like, yes! Mr. Schwan talked about that in public commentary, that there's like good things coming, and this is like proof of it.
And there's still forty-eight thousand left in the big grant for this fiscal year.
So, if you're trying to open a business, or make yours prettier, better, bigger, better, faster.
Bigger, better, faster.
Apply for that.
Yeah.
So, anyways.
So, next was fees for filing of petitions. So, this is, um, basically it's one of those motions where we're instructing staff to do something. We didn't actually do it, but we're talking about doing it, and this will change the fee structure for, put the costs more in line with today's costs. So, the, the, the last fee structure, these are from twenty sixteen and ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Right, so we're, we're just modifying some of the fee structures for filing the different petitions. And resource sharing, so this is an interesting one, and...
What a great idea!
I love this. So, we are entering into a...
You also stole my thunder last night, thank you.
Sorry. You wanna talk about it? Go ahead.
No, that's okay.
I'll sit over here.
You'll sit over there. So, this is just sharing resources on community, on, uh, planning, which we have planners on staff. Long Grove probably doesn't have a huge planning department.
There's just left.
So, there you go. So, now we're gonna consolidate that into us.
And this is interim while they're looking for a new community.
But maybe we do a good job at it, and it doesn't stay interim.
Correct.
That would be awesome. So, I don't know how the building, we share a building inspector with, um, Long Grove. I wonder if that started on an interim basis too.
I don't remember.
You know all the things.
But I know we also do that with Hawthorne Woods.
Yeah, but I'm just curious like on how it started, and like if it started this way, and just continue.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember.
But super creative on our part to like, on staff's part to like kind of jump in and do it, uh, for a different service.
Correct. And I was also, um, I, I mentioned this to, uh, Mr. Enchuk, our community and economic development director. It's a mouthful.
That is actually a big help.
Once we have the ERP system set up, this will be so much easier to take on some of this work from other communities.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
And to review planning, to review building, um, documents, to, to issue permits, and, and do all of those things. So, we can outsource our staff, uh, to create more revenue for the village.
I also think this is a testament on like how lucky we are to have the staff we have, that other municipalities like see that talent, and they're gonna like utilize it as well.
And especially when you look at, you know, the, the village structure within the state of Illinois is, there's, there's so many small villages. We're duplicating government all over the place. Um, Exhibit A, I present to you, the round lakes, all of them.
My god, yeah, all of them have government.
Right, and things can be combined and shared, resources shared, to save taxpayer resources down the road. So, this is a great opportunity for that.
What else?
Public works.
The digester...
So, that was second. First was the...
Oh, crosswalk.
Uh, no, the True North Consultants Environmental Consulting Services. So, this is the, uh, five-thirty-eight Morris property, um, the Josephson site, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
Where the recycling center was?
I believe so. I believe that's the address.
So, this is the environmental cleanup consulting work.
Yeah.
Um, next was the digester lid rehabilitation proposals. So, these bids came in for work at the sewage treatment plant, and they came in almost a hundred and thirty percent over the amount that was budgeted for, and Mr. Boucher mentioned that some of this is just the amount of costs today have increased.
Yeah, and hopefully that like calms down.
It, it is calming down in some of the construction, um, and... No, it's fine.
My mom's watching my kid, and the high maintenance one, so I gotta make sure she's okay.
High maintenance mom or high maintenance kid? Joking, Kathy.
Just kidding, mom.
So, we, uh, we denied the, the proposals that were submitted, and we will look at this, um, again.
Yeah, and it's okay to wait on this, like, nothing's gonna, it's not gonna be catastrophic.
Right, and, and they said either change the scope for the future to lower the costs, or hopefully costs will be more in line in the future with...
Or we can budget correctly for the next year, you know?
Correct.
If we ha, if it's a project that's necessary, which it is, because we all know we need a sewage treatment plant.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, and what is, uh, what does Theo say? Where does it go?
To the poopy pipe.
Yep, the poopy pipe. Next was the finance committee, which pays for the poopy pipe, and, uh, we just, the only thing under the agenda this evening, or last evening, yesterday evening, was payment of bills, and it was one million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, ten dollars and forty-six cents, and that's pretty much standard amount.
Seems right in line with every other...
Right in line.
We were less last time.
Yeah, it was in the seven, seven hundred thousands. So, this is a little bit more, but, uh, still within the normal range of payment to bills, and, okay, so, next up is public safety committee.
There was no report last night, but ancillary, just I was talking to the chief, the fire chief before the meeting. Actually, I was not even talking to him, I was just like listening in on him talk. Um...
Creepy.
I'm super creepy. Um, there was, you know, like, if I ever ran for reelection, someone could just like cut these pieces and just crush me. I'm super creepy, I'm a psycho. Cool.
Context, people.
Anyway, he was talking about the increase in calls that the fire department has seen this year. So, he said he thinks they're gonna do four thousand calls this year. Just don't think about that. That's a lot of calls.
I know last year we saw a huge reduction because of COVID. Everybody was staying home, and there's less car accidents and all of that.
But now the opposite. People are like, "Frighten!", and they're, so just be careful when you're driving. Just be careful. And, and rant.
End rant. Be careful, thank you. Okay, so building committee had no report, transportation and infrastructure. So, this was, um, design engineering services. So, this was the beginning steps to create a crosswalk, uh, of the, the south end of forty-five at Route sixty, right?
Isn't it? I thought it was gonna be at forty-five and like the random light to get into Jewel. Am I wrong?
Right, they just said the south end, and, and I think that's kind of what we're trying to figure out as well.
Where to go, where it should be.
So, there's no crosswalk between that Jewel Shopping Center and Garden Fresh and all of those.
Yeah.
And Diamond Lake Road.
That's a long stretch away.
And there's a lot of people that live in that area. Uh, there's a lot of apartments over there, and individuals that work down on that south end that have to go way out of their way to cross the street legally, or they jaywalk, and it's very dangerous.
Yeah, because forty-five at night is dark. And so, like, in the winter mon, months when it gets dark early, like, that is...
Right. So, this is the beginning, um, of creating a safer environment. So, this is just the engineering services. It was nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, and we're, we, we don't have the amount budgeted for this, or for the work to get it completed. So, we'll have to look at what that amount is, um, to, to get that accomplished.
The village administrator last night indicated it could be upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct. He also indicated that it's inside of a TIF district, inside of TIF four.
So, once we get development in that TIF, the TIF money would pay for that crosswalk.
Could pay for public improvements.
And I had asked, like, I, we know that IDOT is, and this is like not a, I'm not meant to be like mean about this. We've heard from developers that IDOT is backed up right now, and so it could be a long time before this gets reviewed, so maybe there's development, I don't know, that it could line up correctly, but the chances of that are none, so we'll just have to be careful how we budget for it next year.
Correct, which we, we...
Or it might not even be next year. It could be two years, depending on what IDOT does.
Right, and, and we've talked about, I think during our, our budget podcast episode, where we talked about, there's a list of items that we have engineering services ready for. We have, um, the work, we just don't have the money, and, and...
So, this would get added to that.
This gets added to that list.
And then we prioritize it every year during budget meetings, so.
Correct.
It's gonna be on the list, though, right?
Right, exactly, exactly. So, next up was, um, the omnibus vote items. There was two. One was for, let's see, overpayment, uh, so refunding roughly seventy-four thousand for an overpayment, and then three hundred ton line road, this was the, um, the storage... And then three hundred timeline road. This was the um, the storage facility. We talked about that, the last one. So because the village board passed it in the last